Come back into regular session, so if somebody would like to make a motion to.
So move that we exit executive session and return to open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
No discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay, if all who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I think we're starting with Allison's update, superintendent update and the DACA trip permission form, but I'll pass it to you.
Great, and I do have an update on that. We're actually going to punt that to our next meeting. The presenter, who I think really wanted to be here and talk a little bit about the trip, is out today and was unable to attend. So she's going to come back in November, but we're excited to hear from her. The trip doesn't take place until March, so we've got a good while before we have to worry too much. So my next item was enrollment update. I'm going to actually swap this out because we have a guest here who drove from ways away. And that is our project lead for the redistricting project, Nick Stellatano from Dillinger. And he's going to walk you through a little bit about the project that we're embarking on and partnering with his group to get done this year. So, thank you.
And thank you very much, and good evening as the school committee. As the superintendent mentioned, my name is Nick Stellatano. Excited to be here, not too far of a drive, so happy to be here in person and talk through this. We're going to spend about the next 10 or 15 minutes just quickly going over the project as it stands. The contract is just being signed now, so we have not officially, I would say, started. But today sort of represents really where we are, represents the starting point and where we're hoping to go. Next slide, please. The quick agenda, we'll give you a quick, just brief review of who we are and who are the team members that are going to be supporting this project over the next three months. Project components in regards to what the purpose, the deliverables and the timeline are, how we measure success. I mean, at the end of the day, this is going to be a really important phase and project for Westboro. So we're excited to sort of do that in collaboration with you all. Go through what and why the stakeholder engagement is so important and then open up the floor to any questions that you may have. So Dillinger Research and Applied Data is a Connecticut-based nonprofit. We are a women and veteran-led organization. We've been in operation for over five years now. Our focus is really to partner with what we call youth serving organizations. Really, that's schools, districts, state-level entities and nonprofits. Anybody who's in the sort of business of supporting our young kids and students. What we do is really support those organizations across usually all things data. It can be any type of analysis project, implementation support, continuous improvement cycles. Or for instance, in the case of Colorado, we helped sort of facilitate the redesign of their entire school funding formula. And so it's one of those things that we adapt to the specific needs of our clients. And so we're excited to be here and learn and partner with all the folks here from Westboro. Next slide, please. The two members of the team who will be directly supporting, we have a couple other folks, but the two primary members will be myself as the project lead in facilitation support, along with Katie Tartagula. She is our data lead and GIS specialist. We've done this type of work together over the past couple of years across a couple of different districts across the United States and are excited to bring our specialty here to you all. So to sort of take a step back and ask, okay, we are doing a redistricting, what exactly does that mean? The overall purpose of this project is to, for the K3 schools, to redraw those new boundaries for each school for two really significant purposes. One is to better utilize the space available at Fails Elementary School. We know that Fails is a brand-new building and we know that it has a lot of space. And so in terms of thinking about what's best for the students, we want to make sure that we're maximizing all of the resources that are at play to best support the students within the district. We also want to sort of think through when we redistrict those boundary lines, wanting to figure out how we can promote long-term enrollment stability and equitable class sizes across the elementary school systems. As we come to find out, as we look at each school individually, right, each school is designed differently, it's built differently. It can support and has different needs based on the populations that fall within those boundaries. And so really thinking about it as a system across all three schools will be a really sort of important point when it comes to that. Just to kind of reiterate that point here in terms of where we are in regards to enrollment across Armstrong, Fails and Hastings, you can see that Fails currently is the lowest enrollment across all three elementary schools. And so part of this process is really to again, understand how we can better design some of these boundary layers in which to then maximize and best utilize the new resources that there are at Fails. So in terms of deliverables, again, the project starts about today and is going to go through the month of January. And what we are hoping to provide to you all, being the school committee, is four specific deliverables. One will be a demographic analysis around Westboro proper in and of itself. Part of doing this project is to best understand how the city, how the town, how the surrounding areas are all changing, both in terms of demographics and enrollment. Those will then play into, or rather, in concert with the demographic analysis, we'll be engaging with a plethora of different stakeholders to include parents, community members, town officials, the school committee, a steering committee and different district staff from the district itself. We're going to be collecting a bunch of different input from a wide range of stakeholders across a couple of different ways, specifically through focus groups, interviews, surveys and a specific type of survey that utilizes ArcGIS technology or mapping technology in which to collectively understand in specific areas what our folks' feedback around how we're thinking about redesigning some of these boundaries. So we'll be providing you with both, or we'll be helping facilitate the stakeholder engagement and then providing you with a summary of that. Throughout that work, we're going to be designing both the scenarios that you all will consider in terms of how you best want to move forward, along with how best to implement that. The benefit in this case is we are talking about four grades. Some redistricting can obviously encompass 12 grades, which does make it quite challenging. In this case, we'll be providing considerations in regards to how best to support both the parents, the staff and the students through this process. And then finally, there's an interactive story map. At the end of this, redistricting, like we've said, can be emotional, can be confusing as well because you're talking about a lot of different moving parts. And so we do try to help both the school committee and the district as a whole think about how they're communicating both why something happened, how it happened, and how do we come to the decisions that we came upon. So in terms of the timeline, we've broken into three phases. That first month is really about the project management and kickoff. That's basically just identifying and engaging with all the different folks across the district. We will be setting up a steering committee. That steering committee will have representation from parents, from staff, as well as other stakeholders from across the district. They will be walking the path with us throughout the entire process. And so we'll be leveraging them both for immediate feedback in regards to how we're thinking about engaging with different folks to considerations about the implementation and about some of the scenarios. There will obviously be times where I will come to the school committee and both engage with you as a school committee. And then, as I've talked to the superintendent, we're happy to do it one-on-one as we think through some of the trade-offs and considerations that come along with redistricting. The second phase is going to be around initial stakeholder engagement and preliminary scenario creation. So I do want to emphasize, the overall three schools and the size of what we're talking about is not prohibitive, but it is important to note, we are moving quite quickly through October, November and December. In case if anybody doesn't realize, that's probably one of the busiest times, especially around holidays. And so it's just one of those things considering how can we best maximize or elevate the stakeholder voice while acknowledging the fact that there's not a lot of time here at play. So we'll be moving quite quickly, both in terms of collecting all the data that we need, trying to collect as much information from various folks as we need, conducting those analyses and then developing that regional demographic and enrollment trend analysis for you all. We'll come back and present that to you. And then through that analysis, we'll be able to create a couple of different initial scenarios. I think one of the key pieces that we're really trying to emphasize here is, one, a lot of this work is going to be grounded in a lot of the data that we collect, and I'll say both quantitative and qualitative. We'll look at the data, but a lot of it comes down to the community members and their feedback and how they're perceiving this process to be. So it's really important that at the end of the day, people understand what we're doing, they understand why we're doing it and they have the trust that we are being as transparent as possible. And that is something that we pride ourselves on and we will make sure that we are communicating as much as we can so people aren't surprised by any of the decisions that we come to. To that point, when it comes to the initial scenario creations, we will provide opportunities for all folks to be able to provide input, like I said, through those sort of interactive maps. That kind of gets us to December timeframe into January where essentially we're finalizing the input that we received, incorporate any of the feedback and data that we've gotten along with the questions, develop and finalize those scenarios and then come back in January to present to you the final set of scenarios for you to vote on and an implementation plan. So factors to success, I sort of indicated this a little bit, but clear and regular dialogue is going to be really crucial. We will be meeting with the district leadership on a weekly basis, the steering committee at least every four weeks and then most likely coming and providing you all with a quick update on a monthly basis. Transparent and open communication is paramount and key in this regard, and that is what we're going to be focusing on. It is important, and this is part of the reason why we do a lot of the data analysis and engagement with the stakeholders, is making sure that we're contextualizing the data. Every city and every town is different. What might look normal or easy on a map, there's usually a lot of intricate detail when you're actually on the ground, walking the road or driving the road. So traffic can be somewhat tricky. I know there are roundabouts in the city that are somewhat tricky. And so we want to always kind of think about how we're incorporating all of those pieces of the puzzle. And again, flexible and adaptive mindsets. At the end of the day, I always like to say, we are not coming with the answer. We are coming to help you find the answer. Because at the end of the day, that answer has to be good for both you all, the school committee and your students and families. And so at the end of the day, part of this process is to help work through, adapt and overcome any of the barriers that we face. Next slide, please. So measures to success. One, obviously, we plan on delivering and achieving all of our deliverables in a timely manner. We are wanting to make sure that all community members feel heard and valued. I think this is part of the trick when it comes to some of these things. Even though some answers are obvious, I think it can be again emotionally challenging for a lot of families. And so making sure that we're providing that time and effort to listen, to understand and to make sure that we're trying to incorporate as much feedback as possible is truly one of the paramount pieces of success. All voices are elevated during the discussions. You know, in terms of some of these things, there could be some individuals that are very loud in terms of their objective. We respect that and we want to hear that. But then we also have to make sure that there are other folks in the room that are getting their fair share of their time as well. Model and plans are realistic and attainable. There is always the technically correct solution, but those solutions have to be politically feasible and administratively doable. And so at the end of the day, part of this process and part of iterating on a lot of these scenarios is to make sure that, you know, don't let good be the enemy, or don't let perfect be the enemy of good, right? How do we get to that usable solution that is best for as many people as we can maximize? And then finally, stakeholders are informed and empowered. Part of this process is to really emphasize that we are trying to communicate not only to you all and the steering committee in the district, but to the families and the students that are being affected by this as well. So to that point, as we sort of close out this presentation, thinking about the stakeholders, again, always just kind of bringing it back to how are we communicating effectively and how are we engaging them in this process? We started off with the school committee. Again, just in regards to any of the scenarios, before they become public, we will make sure that we are presenting to you through, I think, the mediums in which you all like to communicate with your district. We'll do that through the school committees. There are the municipal partners. A lot of this does incorporate the lay of the land, so to speak, in terms of Westboro proper. And so we want to make sure that we're understanding basically how developments are changing, how the city is sort of growing and evolving over time. And I think getting their voice in this process is going to be key because they're a partner in this, as I'm sure you all know more than I do and probably appreciate. The district leadership, one of those areas where, like I had mentioned before, we'll be engaging regularly both with the superintendent and her team, along with the principals of the schools that are going to be affected and making sure that their voices are being heard through this process because they really have the most context and sort of understanding about the needs of their students and their families and their areas as well. So we'll be making sure that we engage with them. And then finally, and most importantly, you know, the families and the students. They're the ones that are getting affected by this the most and we want to make sure that we're making time and an effort to collect as much information and input as possible through this process to make sure, one, that they actually understand what exactly is happening, but then they, two, that they can lean in and help guide some of the decision-making pieces that will come, ultimately with a lot of these scenario developments. And so that is a very quick, down-and-dirty kind of review of where we are. Again, we are starting officially today in regards to this project and hope to be done by the end of January. So love to open up the floor for anybody who has questions.
I'll start with Steve. Steve, do you have any questions?
Actually, not a question, but perhaps some help in the process. The town has a, what do I want to say? I guess a demographic section of the town that takes, that creates drawings, ability to layer that set of drawings with information such as housing density, zoning, you know, all of that stuff. So basically, I think if you have to do that anyway, you might want to talk to them and see what you can get for nothing from the town.
Love it. Yes, we will. We've already actually started to make the connections out to the town. We also have access to do two different software platforms that also allow us to overlay like 15,000 data points that, you know, are tied to both the city proper in terms of specific points, but also, you know, the average census take at the block level and at the census or the zip code level. So yeah, again, I'm a nerd in that regard, so more data, the better. And then as we look to make meaning of that, I think that's where it's going to be really key for the stakeholders.
Jane?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Yaku.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions.
Please.
So have you provided the service to any of the nearby districts?
Yeah, I think one of the prominent ones that we would sort of elevate is Andover Public Schools. We just finished a six-month engagement with them this past year, so that process ended about March timeframe. And we were tasked with basically redesigning both their elementary and middle school zones.
Thank you. So can you tell me a little bit more about the metrics for how you compare different scenarios? Like what are you looking at? You will look at three, four different scenarios and how do you compare them? What are the things you're looking at?
Yeah, it's a really important point and one that I will give you some. Yeah, it's a really important point, and one that I will give you some examples of what we can use. Part of using the steering committee and thinking about what their role is, as well as the different conversations that we have with the stakeholders, help refine what those priority metrics are. But to your point, a couple of different ways that you can look at in redistricting can be around transportation time. So basically, how long are you thinking about kids are spending on the buses or using time to commute to schools? Socioeconomic distribution or demographics. And so when we're thinking about each individual school, we can think about how they are, what their enrollment population looks like, and how, I would say, similar it is across the town or the three schools, right? You're trying to create, I think, a very standard but unique and supportive school environment, and so how do you best do that? By making everybody have similar experiences. You could look at it in the context of pure utilization, right? How many seats do you have? And then ultimately, are you filling and maximizing those? That can be kind of tricky because, for instance, I believe in Andover, one of their, one of their middle schools used to be an elementary school. And so in today's day and age, when we're designing for elementary and middle, right? I have a middle and an elementary school kid, they're drastically different heights. The size, spatial use of those different buildings can actually play a role. And that's one of the reasons why we really like to try to talk with the principals because what, an 80% utilization rate for one school is not the same as an 80% utilization rate in another. And part of it also is tied to what the district's vision is. I believe, I think your district vision ends in 2026 in terms of the current one, but it's really thinking about what type of programming, what type of student experience you want. And so part of that does play out in regards to what type of resources different buildings have, what do the playgrounds look like? And a lot of that needs to be kind of taken into account. So what we typically do is we'll lay out a couple of different ways we can look at the problem and have different folks weigh in to say like, yeah, this is what we're prioritizing. And so from there, we'll probably take usually three different ways to approach the problem and then give you a starting point across three scenarios where we're essentially maximizing those different variables. That gives you the outer boundary layers, and then, then the tricky part comes in is like, okay, we're going to try to trade off a little bit here and, you know, what you all would deem to be sometimes easy trade-offs, sometimes hard trade-offs, we'll try to work with you all as we move through this process, and then give you hopefully a representative sample of scenarios where it won't be easy, but you can basically understand why we made it the way we made it. And so it just comes down to, I think collectively, having those discussions about what is, again, best for the district as a whole, not only for now, but going forward over the next 10 years.
Okay, so essentially, the steering committee has a way of setting weights to different, to different metrics, I mean, which are more important to our district?
I think, we'll say the steering committee will inform that process. I would love to make sure that the general public informs that you all inform that, so that'll be a part of the process as well.
So I just wanted to comment. I think that part of it is kind of looking at it from what the prob, what the problem is where he started his presentation, which is that building utilization. So this has really come from the fact that we don't have full utilization of the fails building, and that is going to, that is the goal. I think the, you know, elements of what we're going to be looking at in terms of trying to, I mean, and you can correct me, anyone can jump in here, but I just, I do think that it's like busing is going to be our transportation and location, all of that is going to play a huge factor. I'm not sure how much ability we're going to have outside of, you know, logistical sort of things to make a makeup change in any of the schools. And I'm not sure that that's really the goal either, but I could be.
No, I think you're absolutely right. And I think the trick, part of this is geographically constrained. You know, your buildings are your buildings, and they are where they are. And then the population densities sort of play out from that. So to your point, in regards to thinking about trade-offs, right? We can absolutely make everybody perfectly balanced, but it could require an hour and a half bus ride, which, you know, is basically usually a non-starter for more folks. And that's how, you know, this process works. So there might be times where we're actually giving you a scenario that we know doesn't work, but might be helpful in terms of framing the context of why can't we do what we're thinking about doing or what we think some people find important. And so then it's trying to find that middle ground of what is acceptable but doable and, as we've mentioned, achieves what is arguably the priority, which is maxima, best utilizing fails.
I mean, just to be clear, I'm in favor of this process. I just want to understand.
Oh, no, please, yeah, the details.
No, actually, I appreciate that question because I think that this is going to come up, and I think that it's a really important thing. I just think that if everybody kind of keeps in mind that that is the approach, that is the driver behind this, it's going to make the process a lot smoother as opposed to, you know, there, some districts may have other goals in mind, and I think that we're pretty specific in terms of what we're trying to achieve and what problem we're trying to solve. And so if you come at it from that perspective, it may just be easier for the community.
Are you also going to be looking at enrollment projection?
Yes. That's part of the demographic and enrollment trend, is just to see how population, again, density has changed. We'll be tying in some of the urban planning that is playing out with Westboro when we think about some of the developments, and also just looking at previous year trends.
I mean, the housing market right now is a little bit, you know, it's, it's not moving as much, but I, but it could go anywhere, right? I mean, if the interest rates go down, then there could be a lot of movement in the market. And that's not my area, but I'm happy that you're looking into the future. And actually, what I'm getting at is, you know, you have one of your deliverables is that interactive story map. Will we be able to play with different scenarios?
Yes. Yeah, that's the part. So the interactive story map will come at the end. What we do have is a interactive map where we will publish different scenarios. People will be able to zoom in, zoom out, find out where they are, understand where they fall within the new scenario, as well as highlight certain areas and be like, yeah, this doesn't work, and here's why. And so they'll be able to both provide us with a picture and input on, you know, thinking around that. And that really actually helps when it comes to, you know, people saying, well, you know, the intersection of, you know, Malfoy and Potter, right? Like, and we're like, not really, but they can circle it on a map and be like, here is exactly why this is not going to work. So it's a really helpful way to engage with folks.
Okay. Excellent. And just one last question, just from your experience, have these school systems that you worked with, do they implement these like the next year after this is, or is it staggered? You know, how do you implement these changes usually?
Well, so that is dependent upon, I'll come and ask you, how much money do you have? Because, and I say that somewhat sarcastically, but somewhat truthfully, you know, anything is possible in terms of how you're thinking about implementing. It just comes down to how much you're willing to potentially allocate resources to help support, right? And so when it comes to some of these things, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. You can have a delayed response that makes people sort of anxious and gets emotionally sort of like tied up in the impending change. Sometimes I've seen during Andover, there were actually a bunch of parents that were like, just do it, let's just get it over with because, you know, people fear the unknown more than just actually kind of ripping the Band-Aid off. There's options of thinking about, you know, grandfathering and all this other stuff, but again, you have to pay for extra busing, and we know busing and all that fun stuff is not cheap. So again, we'll do all those financial analyses and stuff like that, but again, this comes down to thinking about what is practical, both for the current context of your all's district and what we recommend in terms of that. The good news is, again, K one, two, three, right? Like, that's it. It gets really complicated sometimes when you have an eight-year time horizon because of a kid being in a school for that long, and that creates unique challenges in and of itself.
I think one thing that Nick had pointed out in discussion on Monday is with the K-to-three school, the current third graders are going to be gone by next fall, and the current, the incoming kindergartners will be new. So there are two grade levels really in the school who potentially are impacted with a change. So it really does narrow the focus, so, which is a nice, you know, and they are still impacted. So I want to make sure I say that clearly, but as opposed to a K-to-12 district or even a K-to-five school, it's a little narrower.
And I will start off with, I moved when my kid was in first grade, and so he is still, he is still thriving to this day. So, and I don't want to make light of that, and I'm here to listen, I think, to people's, you know, general fear when it comes to that type of stuff. But part of this process, especially with the steering committee, there are many parents who have definitely moved, have gone through this, and so making sure we're hearing their voices, making sure we're understanding. Because part of the question, too, for the steering committee is, is how would you best support families, right? And some, there's some really, I would say, efficient and effective things and activities that can be done over the summer when it comes to thinking about, you know, playgroups and kids getting introduced and school tours and all that kind of fun stuff.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Tim?
Thank you for the presentation. That is very interesting, the work you're doing in Colorado. If you are ever interested in taking a crack at here in Massachusetts, we would, welcome to help.
I was going to say the same thing.
No, 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 neither.
Just two quick questions. My first one, you talked a lot about strategy and communication that'll be happening for the district. I think you touched on this briefly, but can you just talk a little bit more about what exactly that will actually look like? Like, will that be going through the superintendent's office? Will that be sent up by your organization? Like, what will the actual strategy on the ground be?
Yeah, that's a great point. It's kind of a multifaceted way that we like to do it. Generally speaking, we'll try to work with the district to set up a website that is basically just posting any and all information that is pertinent. Could be steering committee notes, could be different scenarios, could be one-pagers that we create. There is a balancing act between, you know, what information is coming from us versus what's coming from the district. I do encourage, especially in this type of situation, my email will be posted, so usually I highly encourage people to just email me directly. I did pride myself on responding to over 400 emails in Andover to talk to and answer any questions they may have. So part of this process is really just making sure that you're accessible. We don't like to, I would say, recreate new avenues in which to communicate. So generally speaking, if, especially when it comes to the principals, if they have newsletters that they're utilizing, or if the superintendent has newsletters, you know, we want to make sure we're maximizing those because that's what the committee, community is expecting, and that's what they're familiar with. And so basically, like, I'll come back to the word context, whatever, whatever you all want, and whatever we think will best maximize and communicate out to folks is what we'll do.
And then just one other question around public meetings. I know you talked a little bit about interviews and surveys and different ways of engaging the public earlier. It looks like the, the public meetings were in the final implementation section, which it did look like you were also planning to have them potentially in November and December. So I just want to confirm, is it like, do you know already, is it like one meeting, two meetings, like, is there a schedule for how many times people will be able to just really come down and, you know, express their opinion?
Yeah, I think in, superintendent, please jump in if you'd like as well. We are in the process of scheduling meetings now, so that they're on the books if people know. First piece was meeting you all, second piece is getting the steering committee ready. Third piece, we've been entertaining the idea, I would say, in some way or another, there will be one district-wide meeting, there will be at least one elementary school meeting per elementary school, and in some way, we're going to try to do a virtual meeting as well. So it'll be a combination to allow people who may have either time constraints, whatever the case may be, different ways in which to come in person. But we do want to strategically think about, you know, there will be definitely a touch point at the beginning of interpreting a lot of the analysis that we have done so that we make sure that they are getting their input in before the scenarios are starting to develop. And then there might be a time somewhere in this scenario development process to make sure that we're answering questions that people have. Because you can look at a map all day long, but sometimes you just need a question and answer to alleviate any concerns that you may have.
Thank you.
I don't really have, oh, I guess I have one question. Just to clarify in terms of communication, what Tim was speaking to, I think you're going to be making pretty frequent visits to school committee too as well. I think we have you on.
I'm anticipating coming every month.
Yes, I think that's what my understanding is. So that's a great opportunity for you to give updates to everybody, and so everybody will be in the loop. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Nick, for taking the time out to come out here. And if there's any other questions, I will, if not, I'll give it back to Allison. I know she has an enrollment update.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you next month.
All right. Well, this is, you know, somewhat related because we are going to talk about sort of district-wide enrollment, and I pulled together data for you here, and this is, you know, I want to offer up the caveat that this time of year, enrollment is still fluid. We tend to look at October 1st as sort of a target date for, for at least an initial report because that is where the state asks for, for initial reports. But here in Westboro, we also see upticks in enrollment in January as well. Just, there are just things unique to the town where we have flux that happens. So this is where we have it right now. This is a quick overview of where we are by school level. So currently, 84 students that are preschool, that is down from last year, and I'll talk about that briefly soon. Just under 1,000 kids in our K-to-three schools, devied up. Mill Pond at 855, which is a whole lot of 4th through 6th graders. We have 569 7th and 8th graders and 1,141 at the high school and the borough. So that's actually, should be 9 to 12 plus. Technically, the borough is, is considered a part of the high school. WEC is an interesting phenomenon. Now, we, I don't know if you recall this, last year we were talking about budget reduction, and at that point, we really believed we were going to be able to expand enrollment at the element, at the preschool, based on what the preschool director had been seeing. Steve very wisely said, don't count on that, and I'm grateful for that wise counsel today because we're actually down enrollment this year. Reports that we're getting indicate that essentially without, before-after-school care, because the preschool day is short, that the current population of families is looking for their care elsewhere. So that's a really important piece of information for us to grapple with and figure out, you know, can we build something so that we can pull more families into what I think is an exceptionally good program? So that's a little snapshot of WEC. Current grades K-to-three, and you already saw this in Nick's presentation, are, we're uneven. Armstrong's the largest of our schools, right in the middle of town. Fails at 284, and Hastings at 322. And this is a 10-year look back, which is interesting. And one of the things you notice is that spike. The yellow is Armstrong, Fails is in blue, and Hastings is in red. That spike, I believe, corresponds with a development that was not anticipated to bring more enrollment, but did in fact. That was a moment in town that I think people have feelings about. And one of the things we're trying to do, and we'll, we'll work with, with Dillinger and, and the project folks there, is to try and connect with the planning department to really get good data on what is coming down the pipeline in terms of development and understanding for development that has happened in Westboro, what does yield look like in terms of school-aged children? Because it may not track exactly like it does in other places. This snapshot I wanted to put together because I know you had asked last year for more granular detail about what happens in our classrooms. This is our current K-to-three classes. And when you look at this, and I'm going to show you a little later, a kind of case study around K-to-three classrooms. The light green, which doesn't come through, very light green on the screen, those are all sections currently within our class size guidelines of either 16 to 21 for the little ones, or 18 to 22 for the older grades two and three. The darker green are classes that are actually under, under guidelines. So we are in great shape right now in that the majority of our classes are exactly where we want them to be. They're fairly well distributed, and we have a handful that are a little bit under. Sometimes, and you know, you see that band at Hastings, we will have situations where a principal will advocate to keep class sizes small, and it just may have to do with the particular composition of the students in that, in that grade level at that time. Mill Pond, we are also doing really well in terms of our current class size structure. I didn't print out all the classes because there are a whole lot of them, but this gives you a sense in grade four, grade five, and grade six, how many sections we have and the average class size in each of those grades, which falls exactly where we want it to. So in the low twenties, between 20 and 24. I also put down, just to note, which of our classes are co-taught classes at Mill Pond. So it's about a third, you know, quarter to a third of classes in each grade level where we have co-teaching support. At the middle school, we're also, interestingly, middle school class sizes, and I'm not including the specials here because specials tend to be very volatile, so you'll see really big and really small classes often that swing opposite the music schedule. So when the music ensembles meet as a big group, then the PE classes get really small, and when they don't, the PE classes get really big, things like that. But here, you can see, class sizes are very comfortable and even a little low at Gibbons. One of the challenges of class size at middle school and in middle school grades is it's a team-based structure. So you kind of tend to sink down below your guidelines for a little bit before you're actually able to make any staffing reductions, because you have to actually make staffing reductions a team at a time or a half-team at a time. You can't just pluck an individual teacher out like you can in K to 3 or 4 to 6. So we're kind of monitoring that situation. At the high school, we've kind of broken down by content area. So if you look here, you can see, and math gets a little special treatment, okay? Most of our English, Science, Social Studies, and World Language classes are, are by grade level. So you get a sense of the number of sections per grade, the range of students per class, and then class size averages ranging, for example, if you look at English, ranging from 16 to 19, that depends on which grade level. So class sizes are very, relatively low at the high school, and that's something I think we'll be looking at, too, as we go through the budget process. And also, as we look at sort of other things that we're looking to do at the high school. You know, we've talked about expanding access to certain courses. Is there a way to reconfigure parts of the schedule to make that possible? Got this 10-year enrollment lookback, and when you look at this graph, we are low compared to the high point of back in, I'll scroll down a little bit, I think that's 2017, 2018. But generally speaking, this isn't a very dramatic enrollment chart. You, I had mentioned this before, last year, you do see districts where these sort of wild things happen. Westboro's been pretty even and fairly predictable. This downward trend is a trend throughout the state, and it's something we predicted. We are lower than we thought we were going to be this year, however. So our predicted enrollment was going to be somewhere around the high, you know, 3,700 range, and we're, we're shy of that, by the way. So that's a factor we'll have to kind of monitor. I did want to share here, too, and you have a better printout of this, we do have kind of projection data from NESDEC, which is an organization that does kind of class-size projections throughout the state. Again, this is sort of a blunt instrument, and, and it doesn't factor into, into it any, any kind of local planning or local, local development. So it would not, it's not a super fine-grained look, but it just gives us a sense of overall trend data based on census information. So as you can see, this sort of, we are in the middle of a, of this sort of slow downward trajectory, and that's not out of step with other places.
Is this data for, for the whole state?
This is for us, right here.
That's just Westboro?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the projected downward trend is?
Is statewide, yeah. So I wanted to show you a little bit of a case study. This is last year versus this year in those K to 3 sections, and kind of how we can look at opportunities to reduce staffing in a very thoughtful and careful way to continue to be within class-size guidelines, but also to sort of stretch the resources, because I know that's a real concern in the community. So if you look on the left, those were kind of class sizes last year, and the, those darker green, those are all under, kind of essentially under guideline classes. And as we moved into this year, we were able to keep things within guidelines, with a few of those under guidelines. But I want to sort of raise an important point about this, that, you know, last year was, I think, kind of our first true post-pandemic year. It really, it was the first year I didn't get up and talk about the pandemic at the start of the year. We didn't have a lot of conversation about it. It wasn't a big topic or concern within the public. And I think maintaining those lower class sizes immediately in the wake of coming back to school and the pandemic was absolutely the right thing to do in Westboro. Matt's going to come back and do an MCAS presentation, you know, next month, and I think you will see signs of that there, too, that the kids' performance, how we're doing, I think we've really benefited from keeping things small. I don't think it's a sustainable level of small, you know, budget-wise, so that's why we need to look at making some reductions over time as our enrollment drops. But I want to sort of say to you, and say broadly within the community, that that was not a sort of capricious or wasteful act. It was actually a very thoughtful and intentional educational decision that was made. So, and I'm, I feel very fortunate to have inherited a district with that kind of thinking, so.
Can I ask a question on this line?
Sure.
So just want to understand, each row here is, is, is a classroom?
A classroom, yes.
So currently, we have six, six empty classrooms in fails, or five?
So there, I don't, I actually don't know the answer to that question. The classrooms are not utilized all as classrooms, so we don't, we try and use space as best we can. So for example, if there's a room that was designed as a classroom, and we don't have a class for it, we may be using it for other things at this point in time. But I'll find out the actual classroom space numbers for you.
Okay, and then we went, and I see that in, last year, in the first grade in fails, there were two classes listed this year, and now we have, and those kids are now in second grade.
Right.
We have one, and the averages went up a little bit, so that's, that was the accommodation?
Right.
Makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. That's it. That's kind of a broad strokes overview, but I'm happy to take any questions you have or kind of dig up more things for you. I do have sort of backend data that I used to put this together that I will share with you, too, so you can kind of see all the, all the numbers that went into it, and I'll be sharing it with our redistricting folks as well.
I just have one comment, just want to say, thank you very much for putting this together and, and making this public. I think this is very good, very detailed information. We haven't seen this, I haven't seen this level of detail for, for classroom, so I really appreciate that. And I have one question about, do we have, do we have understanding of why the enrollment is going down across the state? What is driving that?
I don't know enough about demographics to, to have that per se. I mean, I've heard things, that, you know, birth rates are down, things like, it's sort of a broader, it's a broader issue across the country, actually.
All over the country, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'll start with Steve. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, other than, I think it's great that we quote "have" this data now, and that we're pursuing the ability to levelize everything, which is a benefit to, to all, in both students, parents, and, and the system itself. So I think this is very good, and, you know, hopefully, we move it right along. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jane?
No questions. Thanks for putting this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we already asked. Okay, Tim?
Sure. I know that you touched on this briefly, talking about the WEC program and some of the issues there. Could you just elaborate that, on that a little bit more for us?
Right, so currently, the structure of the program, they open, I, I think they run two, two-and-a-half hour sort of blocks of the day. So I believe it's 9:00 to 11:30, and then a 11:30 to 2:00. So a full-day program is comprised of both of those together. So for many parents, and I think we have an increasing number of kind of families in town where both parents are working, and where many people are now working at work, you know, there's a sort of go-back-to-the-b buildings, back-to-the-office thing that's happening. That schedule just isn't doable. We don't currently offer extended-day programming at WEC, and some of that is a little bit about sort of space, and some of that, you know, maybe we just haven't sort of sat down to sort of figure it out yet. So I am going to be meeting with Meg, and with Brian Bacon, and with Michelle to sort of look at, are there some options of things we can put together, especially for the after-school portion? You know, that 2 o'clock to 5 o'clock range, I think, could make it much more accessible to more families. That is something I heard early on in the entry process last year during parent copies. I had a number of kind of young families come in, saying, "We would love to send our kid, we just can't do it." And I can empathize. I was a kind of working mom back in the day, and I could not access my local public school preschool for similar reasons, so.
And then just one other question, I want to make sure I understood this correct, correctly. In the 10-year enrollment trends by level?
Yes.
I know that right now, we're coming in at 3,600 and 41. I just want to make sure I understood, we projected that last year to be about 3,700, and so it came in even lower than we?
It came in lower than we anticipated, yes.
Thank you.
And I, I don't know what exactly, you know, we need to kind of dig into the data to look at that. You know, I do know, you know, Westboro was, you know, we had taken in quite a number of students through the homeless shelter program, through kind of refugee resettlement, things like that. Those programs obviously have been impacted by what's happening at the federal level, so that's a factor. And that has not only impacted those folks directly, but it has kind of a chilling effect, I imagine, overall, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, with respect to those, the children that weren't temporary housing here, and then that were actually permanently resettled, so the numbers that we're using are the end-of-the-year numbers also from last year? I'm curious if by, because we had, there was a lot of resettlement done before the end of last year.
In the springtime, right. These are all October 1st, you know, numbers, so it's like would like here. But we did see change last year, especially with regard to, kind of, you know, the hotel-based programs were shuttered. So we still have the Sharp Building, and that program is still intact. But the other phenomenon that really changed is, in the hotels, we were seeing, as you recall, kind of, in addition to migrant families or refugee families with kind of formal refugee status, that population was less stable here. Many of those students were here for very short periods of time. So they'd, you know, come into the system, we'd have them for a few weeks, and then they would get permanent housing relatively quickly somewhere else, and often would opt to go to that district, just because it was such a short snapshot. Sometimes, when we have a student who's here for a while under McKinney-Vento, we can actually keep them for the remainder of the school year, even if they do relocate, just as a sort of stabilizing force for unhoused families.
And then the other thing you mentioned was that we generally have, like, a small uptick, I guess, in January?
Yes.
Or is it significant? Just curious as to?
I don't know the, the actual stats. I just know it gets really busy in terms of registration in our front office, right around that time. So I could find out about that. We have a, a great data guy who can kind of pull some of that for us.
Sure. Thank you so much for pulling this together. This was all stuff that is super valuable, and I know a lot of us wanted to look at it, so it's so nice to have this. Thank you so much. Okay, if we don't have any other questions, then we can go ahead, I guess, and move on to the competency determination? Is that what we want to do? No, that's not happening this week. She says she pushed it to text.
Yeah, yeah, I will find that and pull it.
Are you going to present that?
I sent you a link.
You did? Is it the same as what was there before? Is this?
No, I have not made changes.
You have not made changes? Okay. Do you want to do this, the memo or the?
Not the memo, presentation.
Ah, there we go. Got it. Oh, wait, let me pull my email, hold on, because then I can do the, then I can do the clickies. Just a second for some. All right, give me a second here.
By the way, which one are we opening? Just the policy?
We're gonna take, take a look at the present, there's a presentation I just have to find. Matt, did you do it in gamma, or did you do it?
It's a gamma presentation, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. We should have full editing rights and do it as well.
Edit on the fly. I don't know what you need this, it's so much trouble. Sorry, I didn't bookmark this, um, so. I'm getting a key or something. I don't know what we're going to do with this, right? I know an opening is, is a presentation open. Yeah, it's on, it's on the tab. Ah, there we go. All right, here we go. Maybe it's online, too. All right, here we are.
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone. Brian and I are here to present the competency determination requirements, as required by law, the changes, and the updated CD policy in high school graduation requirements. So what we'd like to start off with is explaining to everyone, you know, why we're here, and what happened was, 11 months ago, the voters across Commonwealth went to the ballot box and, through the ballot initiative process, uncoupled the graduation requirement of passing the MCAS in grade 10 from graduating, a component of graduating from high school. Prior to November of last year, students were required to pass MCAS in grade 10, and that led to something called a competency determination. And what the MCAS assesses is all of the grade 10 curriculum frameworks and all the standards that are in there. So in essence, when the ballot initiative passed, there was the requirement to change the law, because this was codified into Mass General Law. So now, MCAS is no longer tied to graduating from high school, and it created a little bit of a dilemma for the Department of Education and for local agencies, such as where, where we are right now, to determine how a student can meet that minimum threshold set by the state. So, one thing that's important to note is, MCAS still does matter, even though it's no longer tied to graduation. We, we assess students in grade 3 through 8, and also in grade 10. While it does not have sway or influence over whether they graduate or not, we use it for diagnostic purposes. We look at standards, we look at achievement gaps and patterns over time to make programmatic and instructional changes.
Several of our teachers already are using the MCAS data that was just released, doing item analysis of some of their curriculum standards. So we've had some good conversations already this week on that. So it does matter, still. And our kids last spring did an excellent job being committed to it and putting forth good effort to complete the test in the sort of required amount of time. So that's very helpful.
Yeah. So I want to highlight this new legal definition, because what the ballot initiative did was made the legislature, in essence, change the law. So the competency determination is now based on the academic standards and frameworks for 10th graders, not the assessment of that, those standards themselves. And now, if you notice the last clause here, "by satisfactory completing coursework that has been certified by the student's district." So that's why we are here tonight, to articulate and propose our competency determination for Westboro public schools and the high schools, specifically in grade 10, but then also re-articulate our, our graduation requirements for the high school, which is larger than the CD. No, go for it. So here's a timeline, just for everyone to be aware of. The ballot question happened 11 months ago. Desi opened it up, received public input, as you would imagine. Over the summer, school districts and superintendents and principals received guidance about how to implement it for this upcoming school year. And the timeline now is, we are presenting to you our new guidelines and CD requirements, and then we'll speak to the, kind of the ask of the school committee at the end here, because there is some new policy creation that is, is required by law.
One thing to note, that this competency determination has to be satisfied by the graduating class of 2026, so this year. So they put it in place in July, and requiring every student to meet competency in 2026. So, but we're prepared. We've identified some students that would otherwise, if you approve this policy, hoping you will. We had identified some students, even over the summer, in August, what, what they would need in order to meet competency determination, and we adjusted their schedules and put some plans in place so that all eight or nine students are, are on their path to meet competency determinations. And then, of course, we identified those in 2027, and we've already adjusted some things there, too. So no student will be caught up in this late sort of process. And speaking of the process, we had to basically identify through our curriculum standards and our learning expectations, what does mastery mean, and what does successful completion mean? So we've identified that in this, in this new policy that you, you can read fully in the memo sent to you. But as Matt said, you know, we're looking for your support to make sure that this policy reflects both the rigorous standards that Westboro has come to know and, and be able to implement, as well as meet the requirements of, of the state Department of Education. Fortunately, as you can see, the coursework there, that's only part of our graduation requirements. You know, Westboro's history and continued future will be to have those rigorous standards met, and to support all students to meet mastery and successful completion of all of our coursework, which is a little bit above the state standard. which is a little bit above the state standard, which is nice. And speaking specifically of some of our subgroups that have traditionally had difficulty with MCAS, we have plans and activities in place to make sure that we are supporting our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and even students that are coming to Westboro from another district, potentially, you know, late in the process. So this basically identifies what our plan is for students with disabilities that may, maybe difficult for them to meet competency determinations relative to our standards. And what's nice about this is something new for us is to make sure that we put in place kind of an appeals process for those students and alternative pathways for those students. So that if coursework potentially was challenging to meet the competency determination through their coursework, that there would be other assessments and other portfolio reviews in other ways, alternative ways for students with disabilities to meet that competency determination. And the same thing with our multilingual learners. What's a nice thing too, we already have been doing this with our late-enrolling students, you know, those students whose parents got jobs out this way and moved from, you know, one location to ours, senior year, that we do put the right coursework in place for them. What's nice about this now is we can actually have a little bit more flexibility for those students and identify that their coursework from their previous school does kind of meet our definition of satisfactory completion or that mastery, that mastery piece. So looking forward to implementing some of those things. As I mentioned, the appeals process, this is, these are basically ideas right now because we wanted to get something in front of you. But we are very excited to explore ways in which students, and families for that matter, can appeal the process if they do not meet the competency determinations as established by your policy. So there would be theoretically a review process, including school counselors, teachers, administrators, any specialists that work with the particular student. And there would be kind of a full meeting and review of the student's academic progress and work over the four years or one year if it's a student that arrived to us late. And we would, we would have, you know, basically a full review of that. And principal would make a decision and put in place the 10 days. This came out of the state as well, that the principal would respond within 10 school days of that appeals with a decision, and the principal's decision is final. So, and then what's also interesting in the state law, and we've begun the process of looking in to see who, since 2003, may not have met the MCAS requirement that was law between 2003 and last November. And identify those students or reach out to them the best we can to allow them an opportunity to appeal their competency determination. You want to add something to that?
Yeah, so this posed a little bit of an archaeological dig in our records, as you can imagine. We, our technology department looked at some of our SIMS data that went back to 2003 and were able to identify some students that might be eligible for this. It's not a high number, but part of this is actually broadcasting it and making it, just kind of putting it out like we're talking now, and also eventually putting the policy on our website just to raise awareness of this being an opportunity for people that otherwise might not have been eligible in the past. So it's kind of a look back.
Yeah. We were only required by state law to just post it. We want to do a little bit better job and identify those students and try to reach out with, you know, perhaps, you know, email addresses or mailing addresses or phone numbers and some of our contacts with alumni and things like that. So it's kind of an exciting process, and there's no timetable on that. So we're going to make sure that our data is pretty good relative to who might not have met that MCAS requirement, met our graduation requirements, but didn't successfully fulfill their obligation on the MCAS piece.
How would, I'm sorry, I have to ask this because I'm so confused going all that way back. How would it impact them, a 2003, 2004, I mean, what kind of...
Yeah, high school diploma.
Oh, so, so these are people who didn't meet...
They've only got certificates of attainment or certificate of attendance. But we couldn't issue a diploma because state law required you had to meet your graduation requirement and pass the MCAS in those three subjects. We have reached out to two that we knew in the last three to four years. And, you know, we're hopeful that they will come meet with us and get that diploma, which means a lot.
Yeah. So if they've already met our criteria, then, and they respond, then you're going to give them a diploma.
You betcha.
There you go.
Yep, definitely. So that's kind of neat in all this. Yeah.
So on this slide, we highlight the kind of similarities and differences because the competency determination is, I can think of it this way, like the bare minimum threshold by which a student must fulfill our locally designed competencies. In addition to graduate from Westboro High School, they also must meet the graduation requirements, which are much more excessive. And you can kind of look at the compare and contrast between the two. If you want to highlight any...
Yeah, no, I think that's well stated. You know, we've been before you, just a few years ago, to include the two credits, 2.0 credits for world language. And that started with the class of 2027. So, you know, yeah, it's, it is, it's not easy to graduate from Westboro High School. We take pride in that. We take pride in supporting those students through the process as well. That diploma means something. So we're not really worried too much about the competency determination being also part of our graduation requirements in this way because we require those courses already. You know, what the state is requiring us to do is basically ensure that students meet that CD in those subjects for 10th grade, what we already require, you know, so, yeah.
I think it's interesting, the state is sort of trying to come up with a proxy for the MCAS, like what's a minimum threshold that could be common across all districts? So that's sort of what the CD is supposed to represent, is kind of a likeness that, you know, if you graduate from Westboro High School versus another high school, that there's a guaranteed sort of subset of stuff that's in common, so.
Is passing the MCAS an assumption of a competency determination?
Yes.
It used to be.
It was.
It was, not anymore.
Or now, or already now running completely parallel, the two separate...
Yep.
Yep.
Think of it this way, passing MCAS is completely decoupled from graduating from high school. It's more diagnostic purposes and less high stakes, which is what I think the voters wanted.
I will say there are districts out there, just kind of among superintendents, where they are holding on to that. They're actually saying, well, in this district, we're still going to use it. I would, I, I'm trying to imagine how that's going to go, given the ballot, the popularity of the ballot initiative seemed very clear, like there was a clear mandate to sort of disconnect those statewide. So it's an interesting phenomenon that's going to happen. I'll be curious to see how it goes in different places.
Yeah, and again, one thing about our rigor, what I was thinking about was, you know, it's appropriately hard to earn a high school diploma from Westboro High School. It should be some hard work. And if any of you have had students take, or you yourself have taken some of these courses, you know, you know that the workload and the rigor and the standards and learning expectations at the appropriate level that a student is studying at is substantial. It is substantial at whatever level, in an advanced or a basic level. That coursework means something, and it's rigorous, appropriately.
Okay, so now this brings us to why we're here. So by law, we're required to create a new school committee policy. MASC has some boilerplate templates for you. I've linked them to this presentation. I think it's IKFE competency determination, as well as the IKF graduation requirements. So what is required is to create a policy based on the information we've shared and the memo that was shared, which was reviewed by our legal counsel as well. And then, once that policy is created, we can, we can share this information online. I think we can go ahead and share this presentation online on the slide deck and even the memo. We'll put it on our website. And it has to be able to be translated into multiple languages, publicly available. We'll reach out to some of those students that may have been eligible in the, that weren't eligible in the past but now are. And then the deadline is we are required to submit this to DESI in December. The formal policy, the policies that you create, as well as a template that includes the policy information and a lot of this information as well by the, by the end of the calendar year.
That's it. That's the last one.
Thank you, and...
Questions?
Questions?
All right, I'm going to start with Steve. Questions?
It's a great summary to get us understanding, I guess, what happened, what it meant before, what it means now. Obviously, the benefits for some students that may have been disenfranchised because of MCAS. But the bottom line is that, as always, the state's still got their claws. But the bottom line is, I think this is a very good presentation and it simplifies things in terms of understanding as a, let's call it, layman of how these changes made. And also makes it easier for us, I think, as a school committee, to understand what we have to do, and we have to do it relatively quickly. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This is so exciting, and I read it as 2023 to 24, but it's so great that it's going back to 2003. I mean, I would like to make those phone calls myself because that's like going to be so exciting. So it does, just a couple of questions. I think this is really great. I, MCAS has always seemed so high stakes for the teachers and the students, and I'm just so happy to see, you know, it uncoupled from graduation. Are MCAS scores still part of our rankings, like percent that pass? Is that another thing that...
In terms of like the Boston Magazine and US News and...
Yeah, I mean, the things that we use often at town meeting, though, too, to, you know, show how great of a job we're still doing. So I think it's, I mean, I know my kids, when they heard about the, the, it being uncoupled, they were like, oh, we don't have to take MCAS anymore. And I said, no, you do. And they said, we don't have to try on MCAS. I was like, no, you do. So, you know, I guess we still have to keep that in mind. And then satisfactorily complete, does that mean pass? The, you know, I see kind of what's outlined, like capstones and...
Yeah, those are, those are measures by which we can certainly implement with students that we've identified after sophomore year that they might need a different pathway. But satisfactory completion is passing, you know, taking, taking the assessments, attendance, making the attendance requirement of 90% or better, and passing the course with a 60% or higher.
Okay, so it's those actual courses?
Yes.
Okay, and then it also sounds like we are able to be very proactive for at-risk students, which is really different from the MCAS because we're very, we have to be kind of reactive, right, with the MCAS? So that's great, and we have that in place? Because that wouldn't be part of our policy, right? But that's would be part of what the school does.
That's correct.
And I will say, you know, one of the, I can't believe I'm about to do this, but one of the virtues of the MCAS is actually it's sort of data that's available to us that does allow us to do some planning on behalf of younger students especially. I think, you know, when we receive those reports and we're sort of in the process of working through the data, but also on the school side, they get individual student reports that are able to really look at how kids are doing. And that allows us to think about intervention and support. So we can be proactive in that sense. But, but that was, you know, when you untie it from the graduation piece, it definitely takes a little bit of the pressure off of students and puts the pressure probably where it belongs, which is on the educators, so.
Yeah, and, and then there's remediation, right? That is available to students still in this...
Yes, credit recovery or summer school options or, again, as we said, that alternative pathway. Because if we've identified a student that is not able to meet the traditional process by which they could satisfactory complete, taking it a second time may not be the best option. So what else can we do? So that, that is, that's kind of a nice thing. We do that on some smaller cases right now. But I think, you know, with this process in place, that gives us greater flexibility to work with some of those students.
That's great. I mean, it seems like we could put a system, you know, put this together and implement it in such a way that any student that applies themselves and works with the system earns a diploma.
Right.
And it sounds like there have been, you know, some students that have done all of that and haven't earned a diploma. So that's really wonderful.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that went into it. If I recall correctly, our, our committee voted against removing that requirement, the MCAS requirement, when we were voting on the resolution. And I am a big supporter of MCAS. I wish it was still a requirement personally. I'm worried that, that the diplomas right now will be perceived as less valuable than before. And I'm not saying they, you know, that they should be, but there might be a perception of that. So I'm wondering about the criteria, when they're, do they have to be approved by DESI? Like, what is the control mechanism from the state's perspective? Like the...
Yeah, so the, this, I need to upload our competency determination policy that you create and then are approved to the state, and then the state will have compliance over that. I don't understand exactly, or it's unclear at this time exactly what the mechanism is. I will say, a lot of this has been created very recently, and they're requiring us to figure out the requirements largely on our own and the pathways on our own. And on some levels, it is a little concerning. On some other levels, they're ceding some of the authority back to the local districts to make decisions. And that, I think we are able, incompetently able to make that decision going forward.
I'm not worried about, about Westboro. You know, it's more, it's more about the perception of, you know, of these changes moving forward. And it will be interesting to see in the future if we can compare our, our criteria to other, to other towns, you know, to the top schools, kind of so we can convey that our, our school was, you know, the diplomas have a high quality, you know, high value, even without this MCAS requirement.
Yeah. I can reassure you through a story. We had a student who graduated last year and right up until February had not satisfied the science requirement. Just, science was not their thing. Taking the assessments in our science classes was definitely not their thing. So we tried, you know, an elective of oceanography. We tried forensics, something that maybe the student would get interested in. Had modifications and accommodations, still wasn't working. Showed up every day, not an attendance issue, just was not doing the academic work in the science courses that, and he just needed one more half-credit, okay? So anyway, we put astronomy. He loved astronomy, loved the stars and the constellations and all of that. And we, and his family, took an online course in astronomy. We helped support his learning through that. And then at the end, he presented as a capstone. It was supposed to only be seven to 10 minutes. It went 35 minutes. I was there, assistant principal was there, his team was there, father was there. And he passed. He passed that half-credit of science because of something that he demonstrated mastery of something he was passionate about. And I think that's an opportunity, you know? And I see, I see that as a big possibility with all of this, is to be a little bit more creative with some of our students around what it is that they can demonstrate in a mastery kind of way. You would have been blown away. And one of his science teachers that freshman year that he had twice... And one of his science teachers that freshman year that he had twice, was there, and was, again, the pride in the room was what it was all about, you know? That diploma meant a lot more to him than, you know, some of the other stuff. So, let's share that as a tidbit of what we can do with this. Thank you.
That becomes the excitement of a teacher, to have taught.
Yeah, totally.
And you can see it when, in the eyes of the teacher who is able to see the learning experience of the child. It's just amazing when it happens.
Yep.
Thank you.
I thank you both for the presentation. I mean, this is very helpful. I know, after the ballot initiative passed, there was a lot of discussions of, you know, questions of who was going to actually figure this out. So, thank you both for having on the front line and actually doing that. A few questions. My first one is referencing on the slide where you're talking about supporting all students, specifically under the Students with Disabilities. It's talking about in some situations that, you know, you could work through, traditional routes aren't working, like you're describing, you could work through a team to decide on alternative requirements. Would that include parents as well, or would that just be a team within the school?
Yeah, so, I should have been clear. So, if a student has a known disability, they're usually on an IEP in the, the FRIES team. We would mean the IEP team, which includes the parents.
Gotcha. Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, good question.
A couple of other questions. I just wanted to confirm, and I know that a lot of this is still very up in the air, and that you guys are trying to figure this out kind of live. I guess, two questions based on that. The first would be, I'm curious how much guidance the state did give. It sounds like not a whole lot in terms of the actual language, but was this taken from, you know, any kind of like suggested language template, or was this completely drafted from, from whole cloth?
I, I would say it's been drafted by, based on guidance that DESI gave us, that changed over time, and it evolved, based on probably stakeholder feedback. It also was informed by legal counsel. And then, I met with a variety of other assistant superintendents to share best practices, how they're approaching it. I, I know we talked about it at the Mass, the Mass Superintendent's Conference this summer, because we're not alone in this, right? There's 351 towns trying to figure this out in, in Massachusetts right now.
If I could add, we were prepared in January of 2024, excuse me, January 2025, right after the ballot initiative had passed, with, with an example of, of a potential policy. And then, it changed again in February. So, we were drafted, redrafted that for March, April, and then we just said, well, the end of the year is coming, let's wait and see. And sure enough, in May, there was another meeting with DESI, and then they gave the guidance in July. I think what else framed this was, DESI did a nice job of giving us a template that required us to answer specific questions. So, that was helpful.
Yep.
Because we put a team together with Matt two weeks ago?
Yeah, I think...
To answer those questions, make sure we all were on the same page relative to that.
It needs to be said, it's more than just the two of us. I mean, we had a lot of help from people at the high school, team leaders, assistant principals, coordinators.
Sure, awesome. And I thank you to you all. And I guess my final question would just be, I know it's likely far too early to know exactly what other districts are doing across the state, but I'm just curious if you've heard any indication if other schools are also raising the requirement, like you talked about at Westboro, over the, the competency determination, or if there's any indication that like, other schools are just leaving it at that competency determination of the state side?
Yeah. So, I know of two surrounding schools that are taking this up, started this week. So, they, they're putting their team together and answering those questions. I shared as a, our draft with them, because just, good, good collegiality. And I'll, I can give you an answer on that a little bit later, but as you heard Allison say, some are just adopting the MCAS requirement. But I, I think, I think school districts similar to ours will take kind of a similar approach as we, you know, work together on things often.
I do think a lot of the high school graduation requirements that, that communities may impose above and beyond competency determination are very much driven by the, the college entrance requirements. So, we're looking to kind of tee, tee that up for kids, make sure that the kind of bucket of things that they, they're learning here are going to be sufficient to help them move on and do, be successful in college and career. So, that is going to be, for the overwhelming majority of kids, well beyond 10th grade English, so.
Just want to add one more thing. So, there is something called Mass Core. So, the State Department of Education put out kind of, you know, what school districts should think about relative to graduation requirements. I do know, we don't follow Mass Core. We're actually, our standards are a little bit above the Mass Core requirements, but some school districts are strongly considering just adopting the Mass Core requirement, so.
One other point I forgot to mention is, once approved, this will have a cascading impact on other documents, like the Program of Studies and Student Handbook and other documents that will need to change.
And, well, a final point, since we're on this slide, this has implications for our out-of-district students as well. So, students who are, are students, their home district is Westboro, but they're maybe attending a private special education school, will still have to meet the district-stated competency determination to be eligible for a diploma. And that's important. The private schools and the collaboratives are aware of this, and they're sort of, kind of watching carefully to see what the districts are doing, so that they can adjust some of their programming accordingly, so.
So, before they had to pass the MCAS?
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you both. Great presentation.
So, I, I think this is great. I had initially concerns about the MCAS being removed as a graduation requirement. I think now, the way I see it, is the data's going to be there. I'm, I'm not sure if there's a correlation or any information that you used as guidance from the MCAS itself to sort of inform your policy and how you want it to, you know, in terms of minimum standards and subject matter that's covered? Not sure, but I imagine that in our district, we're probably above that in any event, so... But I would think that, that a lot of districts that are not may, may use that as a guide, too. But the fact that there's just so many kids out there that do not test well, it's a very high stakes, you know, I feel the same way about the SATs and the ACTs, and I think it's become much nicer that so many schools have gone either test-blind or test-optional, because it's the four years of work that you put in. And then, to not be able to get a diploma at such a young age, and to, to close a door for you, pretty, you know, significantly to close doors for you, is just, I don't know, I, I think that that's very unfortunate. So, I, I think this is, this is a great initiative. I, I do think that we're lucky that we happen to be in a district. I, I share some of Jakub's concerns for other districts, but I think that we are fortunate that we're in a district that is already so high-performing, that some of these are not really concerns for us. But, yeah, I think that's great, and, and I think the, the work you guys have put into it is great, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, have a great night.
Thank you.
We had talked about this, just given the timeline of submission in December, we kind of put it out, it's a lot of information to digest, so the thinking was to kind of give you an opportunity to really look it over, digest it, and do the vote on this particular policy next time, once you've had that opportunity. And that still gives us plenty of time to post and submit before the December deadline, so.
Oh, one other question. So, are districts, though, when you said some of them are holding on to it, are some of them putting in their policies that passing of the MCAS is presumptive, you know, positive competency determination?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes. All right. I mean, I haven't seen it yet, so, I mean, we'll, we'll see if it survives the process.
But wouldn't that mean, I mean, none of either or, though? I think it's like, they're using MCAS still, right?
I think there may be districts that do both.
No, they can't. They're, they're, you can't, you could, given that kids take it, it could be an example
of one way you could meet the competency, do you know what I mean? One option among many. But there are districts that have had conversations about just maintaining it within the district, because the sort of general sentiment is among, you know, there are ways to sort of check how the vote went in this particular community. We haven't done that, but that'd be an interesting thing to do.
Clarify, when you say maintaining it, I mean, the, the law is, is the same, so they can't use it as, if somebody, you cannot preclude, if somebody were to not pass it, they can't not, based, based on that alone, not graduate that?
I think it's not, so, I'd have to really look at the letter of the law. I mean, the law removed the statewide requirement, but local requirement may be different, right?
Yeah, so, getting very kind of technical here. The competency determination shall be based on the academic standards and curriculum frameworks for 10th graders. So, that's the, DESI has the frameworks for 10th graders. The MCAS in 10th grade measures if students can demonstrate whether they can know or to be able to do those standards.
Right.
So, that is the old way of measurement, but some districts, my understanding, are still maintaining that students must demonstrate that by passing the MCAS. It's kind of circular logic.
So, they're keeping it as their local?
Yes, as their local requirement.
Could I add one thing? So, one principal who I spoke with last week about this, he thinks that their district is going to keep the MCAS. As the assessment for individual subject matters, so biology, you take the biology MCAS, if you pass that, you're done. That's it. You've met the competency in that district if you pass the biology MCAS. Same thing with the math MCAS.
But if you don't?
Then you, according to their definition, so that's where the local authority is. They've defined the final assessment, because we had options. We didn't say final assessment necessarily. We said successful completion of the coursework, which often includes a final assessment or alternative measures. Some school districts are thinking that they would have the MCAS biology as the assessment to determine competency in that subject matter.
So, nothing changes, then, in that district?
It would, it would appear so, yeah.
Well, it's not for all subjects, it's, it's for a specific subject.
Just the ones that require the CD, so Algebra I, Algebra II, or Geometry.
It, it isn't, because it's not cumulative, but I, but I, I still don't understand, because in the, in the legal definition, it says, "by satisfactorily completing coursework," which implies that a test is not coursework. An assessment in, in a MCAS would not be...
The guidance from DESI suggests that they can identify a final assessment as that successful completion.
The tool, the tool to make the determination?
Yes, the, the, so, so we could have gone that route, but we feel as though 180 days of teaching and learning and assessing is probably the best way to have satisfactory completion, not one assessment in June that says a student passes it.
True. My question was more, I mean, that's something separate. My question was, why couldn't we also additionally, as another, you know, avenue, say that you are presumed to have concluded, have completed the coursework if you also, if you are to pass it? I mean, as one more avenue. But I mean, it's not necessary, I just thought, i, i, if it's measuring, if we're using the same metric as far as the...
So, you mean MCAS or satisfactory completion?
So, where, basically what we're doing is, they, they task you with essentially coming up with your own framework, to say that these students have, have the competency, and they have been determined to, you know, have achieved whatever needs to be done in order to proceed with graduation. So, I guess, but the, this other thing that you guys just threw in there is really confusing me, because I, I would think that that's, I, I don't understand how they...
Well, you're, you're chasing something that doesn't exist in this town. The fact that somebody may be violating the law in another town really is not a subject for this discussion.
Correct, but we are, I mean, we're talking about the making of a policy here, so if we're in the process of doing that, then that's a consideration.
But I don't think they said they were. I think they're doing their own thing.
At this time, we don't recommend coupling MCAS with the local CD requirement for Westboro. I feel like the...
It was just an exam.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Yeah.
So, I have another policy. This is not going to be a, a large presentation. It's simply a kind of draft policy for you to consider, and this, this is, this is something that came at us very fast. This was a, a state law that changed in May. We got sort of framework and guidance in the summer, and they would like us to pass it and upload it to a portal in DESI by October 31st. So, fast and furious. There is a waiver process. If you have any concerns or issues, we can submit a waiver and get by ourselves a little more time. But to explain, it's basically a requirement that sort of codifies a process to make sure that students in districts that have opportunities to go to career and technical schools in the district or as part of a member school, like, so for us, that's Assabett Valley, that we have articulated a process to make sure students learn about the school, have opportunities to, in, explore that option, and opportunities to apply. And fortunately, we took a look at this, Jack Bulley, the middle school principal, took a look at it, and, and what we are doing now is very, very much in alignment with the requirements, so it was just a matter of writing up what exactly that is. So, you'll see that, that it's not a particularly extensive policy. It kind of runs through, you know, who we are, what are the kind of career and technical schools that we feed into, Assabett Valley. This talks a little bit about the different programs that are available there. Our collaboration and how we work with Assabett Valley around making sure students get the information that they need in order to apply to the programming, and maintenance of records. And really, those are the kind of key pieces of, of this sort of required change. I think the issue was a concern that there may be students in some school districts who were not learning about this option, and there was a real desire to make sure, I, I think in general, there's a larger push throughout the country, to think about, how do we help more kids get into career and technical education programming and get into kind of tech fields down the road and, and things where we have kind of not enough employees, you know, in manufacturing and things like that. So, that's a little bit of the context. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take a stab at answering them, but I think it's pretty much in line with what we have been doing in the past. No major changes here.
Does anyone have any questions, or do we want to move to a vote on this?
I'll, I'll take the, I'd like to move that we vote in favor of the ZTE policy presented.
Any other second?
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor at 5:00?
Great, thank you.
Okay, moving along. I don't see anyone here, I don't believe, for citizens, unless Gretchen wants something, something she wants to add. No, okay. Let's start with school committee reports. Steve?
I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to discuss the ZTE, ZEV policy that we've been working on for years, for which I think the, the tenor changed in September, on September the 4th, with a presentation of ZTE people with a request to the, for the school committee to vote on that form of the, of the policy. And so, I'd like to consider a discussion and a vote on the ZEV policy tonight, which was removed from the agenda on Monday morning. Those documents were submitted to the school committee for its review on Monday, September the 29th, and I believe that we've had sufficient time to look at the policy as offered, and that policy, my reason for this request is, I believe the school committee decision on the information available has been in the hands of the committee for at least 10 days prior to this meeting. The committee has been told a number of times it must vote first on the policy before others will. It's been told that we must agree on the ZEV policy for the town to move forward with its implementation and other agendas. This ZEV policy included in the information provided to the school committee was formulated as a result of a requested Zoom meeting with four voting members of the Sustainable Westboro Committee, who offered the policy that's been before you for our consideration for those 10 days. Those members were the Chair and Vice Chair of Sustainable Westboro Committee, Select Board Member Patrick Welsh, and our school committee member, Tim Haskin. I also contributed to the meeting, and the result of the meeting was that, at that time, we were presented with the policy that you have been reviewing for the last 10 days. So, it's not an issue. I believe you saw that the, there were minor changes to their policy that was presented to us on, on February the 4th. In the interim, of course, we made some comments to them, they did their best to, to come up with a document that would be acceptable. I think it's important to put this issue behind us by voting on this particular ZEV policy. by voting on this particular ZEV policy, which is acceptable to the school committee, which it is, I believe, acceptable to the school committee and at the same time protects the policies and the responsibilities of the school committee that are assigned to it by state law and the town charter. In particular, this current ZE policy was supplied by Sustainable Westboro to us for action and is a process no different than the five or six times brought to us before. The one difference now is that as a result of the compromise offered this time, I believe that the school committee's interests are protected and I support a positive vote on the document under review. I therefore move to consider a discussion and a vote on this offered policy from Sustainable Westboro for consideration at the school committee at this time. And I so move that we take action in that manner.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
A second. Discussion.
And so, I can weigh in here as well. And so, I appreciate Steve, the meeting that we did have and us working together. And I think that the document is in a very good place. And as you said, that I think it supports the initiatives that Sustainable Westboro is obviously going after, as you said as well, protecting the school committee and opening us up to anything that we don't want to be opened up to. I will say, just from what I understand of the Sustainable Westboro members, is that they actually have not had a chance to, they did propose this to us with the changes, but they haven't had a chance to a full vote within Sustainable Westboro. And so, just from what I understand with them, they were hoping to first have that official vote taken, because I believe previously when it has come to our committee, that they had had that officially voted. And I know that they were also very adamant that they were here when we did take this up, just so I could answer any questions and things like that.
Well, finish your discussion. I'd like to comment on that.
Sure. And I am, I am very supportive of the policy overall and I am very excited to vote for it. But I guess personally, just based on what I understand from Sustainable Westboro, I would be in favor of waiting until they are able to formally vote on it.
Well, I guess my answer to that is simply if this policy that we have seen before is as acceptable to us, I believe it's in our best interest to put our best foot forward and vote it. If they choose, that is, if they choose to offer something different, certainly we're in the same boat that we have been before, but at least this committee has taken a positive action in that regard. I would also offer that with a 10-member committee, that four of you offered this policy. So, do more in this vote. I would also suspect, based on the, on the level of the people who were in this discussion, that in fact, it should represent what is honestly offered to us. And it should be, in my opinion, a vote on their part to accept what's been a very long vote. I do think there's a benefit to us to vote it tonight. The specific benefit is to have today's date on this vote so that whatever might change in the meantime by Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that the policy stands as is. What's, what is significant for us as a school committee is the right for the school committee to rescind its action if things going forward, including budget impacts or documents or requirements that are untenable to the policies and purpose of the school committee. So, having said that, I don't really believe why it should have been removed from the agenda.
Yeah, so, I'm just going to comment on this. Basically, what took place was that the document that I received to be put on the agenda was, still had some markings in it. It had a bunch of comments that were made by Sustainable, my understanding, which I think was my misunderstanding, was that actually those were not in there, they should not have been in there, they just needed to be removed and that the document was ready to go. After speaking with Tim, I learned that I think that the committee itself has not yet completely approved that document. And, you know, and I completely agree with you 100% Steve, that, you know, we as a committee have looked at it. I think we are comfortable with it. I would like to vote it. I don't feel good voting it tonight with Sustainable having not voted it or having not had the opportunity to come together as a committee and, you know, approve it. They have specifically asked that we wait on approving it till our next meeting to give them time to meet. I personally don't think that that's going to cause us any harm, although, you know, I don't know. That's just what I think. And so, I would prefer, and that is why I had it removed from the agenda, that I did not think that it was, you know, when we were specifically asked to push it, I didn't think that that was such a big deal. And so, that's where we're at.
I guess I, I agree with Steve in that we would be in the same spot in our next meeting if they made changes and we had to revote on a new, you know, if they asked us to vote on a new policy.
So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in the same spot. We just wouldn't vote it. But I also don't think it's efficient to vote a policy that if we, if the goal was, which at the meeting that we had discussed, that we were going to have this subcommittee or whatever you want to call it, and Steve went in there to negotiate and discuss with them.
That was the purpose of this Zoom meeting, was to do just that.
Right, and so, he did. We did it in good faith. And I think I just want to carry that through as opposed to voting something that if, for some reason, was not agreed upon, goes then to select board or elsewhere and it's turned down purely because it was not really ever approved by Sustainable. So, that's, but yes, if they were to come back with changes, then we just would not vote it. And I don't think that.
I don't think that's in the best interest of the school committee not to have the policy going forward, at least our opinion of what it should be. So, to the extent that, let's say, they came forward, they made some more changes for which we found unacceptable, then we're still sitting there with nothing. I believe this is now a positive, it could be, if it's voted. Could be a positive step forward to move this thing off of our agenda into somebody else's agenda. You recall that this thing has two signature sets. One is the school committee and the other is the Board of Selectmen. I don't see any signatures on there from Sustainable Westboro. So, this becomes a policy between the two boards. And I think it's important that this committee sets forward what we want. And that's how we do it, is by a positive vote.
I understand, and I agree with your sentiment to some degree. I just think that when we were asked to push it, I don't see the harm in doing so. So, that's my position.
If I can just quickly weigh in as well. I do agree, I know you mentioned this Steve, that you are correct in that I think it's very unlikely that there are going to be any changes. And I think that it is much more kind of semantics, you might say, you know, pro forma of, you know, that they want to take the vote first. Again, I'm very supportive of a favorable vote. I'm excited to vote for it. I guess just, you know, echoing what Sarah's saying, I guess they, just from what I understand, Sustainable Westboro has expressly said that they would rather be here for the vote and to push it back. And so, I personally would rather kind of work with them and within those wishes, even though I think technically, as Steve is saying, that, you know, this is not, it's between the school committee and the select board and I think that we are able to move forward. But I just know that Jeff and Peter would like to be here just to be able to answer any questions, things like that, even though it doesn't seem like there may be, might be many. So, that's where I stand.
I would say that the current policy is a product of a compromise and long discussions between the two boards. And I think it meets, it meets our expectations of the language in it. I looked over the different comments in the document. I don't see any, any real issues. And I support voting for this today so that we can move on, because we've been dealing with this for a very long time. And I think this will benefit the Sustainability Committee as well. And if, I'm worried that they will, that this issue will drag and we will be blamed for not moving this issue forward. So, I am, I am supporting.
I think that we could be blamed for trying to do something unilaterally and not working. I mean, if we're being asked.
Come on, we've been working on this for two and a half years.
Right, but that's why I don't think another two weeks or a couple of weeks is going to, you know, set us back much. That's all. I don't see why that is such a, that's going to be so much to our detriment. I just don't, I can't see.
Well, I'll tell you why, because our next meeting is after this coming town meeting. And to the extent that we could be, you know, a whipping boy based on where we are, I want it to be a positive statement from the school committee that we agree that in fact, the ZEV policy as it's currently written and as offered to us is acceptable to the school committee. That's what our vote means.
Right, so, I mean, we would be stating that we accepted a policy offered to us. You know, the perception could also be different, that we voted a policy that was incomplete, so.
It is not incomplete. It has everything in it that they offered the first time, plus changes to it to compromise with us. And if that is not acceptable to Sustainable Westboro, then I think it's unfortunate. And I think it's not in the best interest of the school committee to delay. So, you know, if we're going to debate, I guess, the nuances of what we're doing, let's put it to a vote and move on.
All in favor?
So, are we voting on approving the policy?
Yep. All opposed? So, three, two, zero.
So, with that, that's my report.
Jake?
Okay, so, I have just a brief report that on October 22nd, Meg Garvey, our Director of Student Services, is having a parent meet and greet where all of the building level Director of Student Services will be in attendance. So, I hope that parents will attend that. And I hope, you know, school committee members would attend that too. I think that would be great for us to show support to Meg and her team. And I think it's great that she's bringing all of the school level coordinators to meet and talk with the parents. And so, that's going to be the 22nd from 8:30 to 10:00 at the Sugar Shack.
Jakub?
Nothing to report.
Tim?
Nothing to report.
Okay, and I have nothing.
Can I add one thing? I would, as you know, when the document was submitted, it came with a cover letter to the Board of Selectmen. I'm asking that that cover letter be included in our vote.
Has everyone seen the cover letter?
Good.
So.
I have one.
I guess. I don't know if we have to revote it, one.
I guess we would have assumed that that was in the vote that we just had, because that was what was given to us.
Was it, is that what you assumed?
I did, yes.
It was on the original, it was in the original, it was posted and circulated.
All right, then, that's fine. So, I guess we have a couple of action items. We've got two, let's, if we want to do these as two-bolt votes of approving the minutes for two meetings and then accepting some donations? If anyone wants to make a motion to accept the minutes from the two meetings?
I would move that we accept the minutes from September the 24th and September the 5th.
Do you have a second?
Well, could we actually, potentially, just because I wasn't able to attend on the 5th, could we actually maybe do it separately, just so we can abstain from the second one?
Okay. Go ahead, you want to amend that?
Yeah, so, the motion is to approve minutes of September the 24th.
My second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
And move the minutes of the 5th of September, 25 as well.
My second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. And then, oh, I'm so sorry. I need to look up next time. And then, do we want to do these separate or do you guys want to do them?
These are two separate. One is the quarterly financial report. And I put it in here because there's, it's not super exciting stuff, but things we can kind of tick through quickly. So, the exciting one is the rock wall donation. This is great, the Turkey Trot, which is, they sort of, Turkey Trot and the Westboro Education Foundation sort of worked together on this. And they have been able to make a donation that's going to allow us to replace the aging rock wall at the Gibbons Gym. So, Gibbons Gym's getting a lot of love these days. We've got the new gym floor, aging rock wall going to be replaced, which is, it's great. I think it's, it's a nice feature. Our teachers actually went this past spring to get recertified, so we'll be able to really put it to use quickly and get kids climbing up the wall, which is, in middle school, just about right.
I move that we accept the rock wall donation with gratitude.
My second.
Can I add a comment?
Yes.
I just want to say a big thank you to the Westboro Turkey Trot and encourage the residents to participate in the upcoming one on November 22nd. It's a great event. I've been doing this for many years with my whole family and I encourage everybody. And I'm very happy to hear that, you know, it's giving back to our community. I mean, it's wonderful.
I'm excited to be in the mix this year. I don't, I don't run, but I'll walk and, you know. Do you get to actually wear a turkey outfit? Is that part of the?
You could.
You could, okay.
There is a turkey outfit to be worn.
Okay.
By someone.
Somebody.
All right. So, where were we at?
We have to vote.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay, and then the ABC report?
I'd move the report as written, but I would point out that the summary in the last column mathematically doesn't make sense. However, for the bottom line, when you do the proper analysis here, that they did, to the good of roughly $150,000 versus the number that just doesn't make any sense. That's the 854-117. So, when you, when you deal with what's shown in these columns, that particular number just doesn't make any sense. Maybe there's some method by which it would, but.
The two numbers, the total revenue and expenses are added up instead of subtracted.
Correct. But anyway, the summary statement is that there are a couple of, 100, 150,000 to the good in their current books, so, that's good.
Okay. You made a motion, right?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Any discussion besides what we have? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. And if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.